Welcome to this regular session, Grant County Council meeting. Tonight, the prayer will be led by Mr. Connor and the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Living. Would you stand?
I'd like you to pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this chance to be together tonight and do the people's work. We are so thankful that we have a country where we can do these things. And we just pray that you'll be with us, give us good judgment, good discernment, and let us have the hearts of servants. It's in your son's name that I pray and for his sake, come in.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. If you would, do the roll call, please.
Scott.
Here.
Connor.
Here.
Hicks.
Here.
Perez.
Here.
Pauling.
Here.
Lemming.
Here.
Middlemore.
Here.
We have a call, and we're all present. If you would, go ahead and do the auditor's report, please.
Um, no, I have nothing to report at this time, but if you have any questions about the reports that I have given out, I'll try my best to answer this.
Are there any questions regarding any of the reports from the auditor? I know we talked a little bit about the disbursements in March were a little higher than normal, but being that there was three pays and some workman's comp went out quite a bit. There's no questions, we'll move on to the approval of minutes from the regular session of March the 20th, 2024. Are there any corrections, questions about the minutes? If there are none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve the minutes from regular session, March 20th, 2024.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Lemming and a second from Mr. Pauling to approve the Grant County Council regular session minutes from March the 20th, 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Abstained.
No abstention. Minutes are approved. We'll move on to new business, first item under new business, item A, Grant County E-911, Kevin Hicks with the salary ordinance amendment to the E-911 fund. Mr. Hicks did contact me and he wouldn't be here this evening due to a medical emergency within his family. If you want, I'll read the letter, says, "I would like to request the salary ordinance amendment to reflect a job title change for Marla Wilson. She is currently listed as a operations manager/IDAX coordinator, and I would like to update her title to deputy director. This updated title more accurately describes her role within our department. This title change would not result in a pay raise." So we need a salary. Do we need to spend the rules?
You can.
We might as well accept this procedure.
Right.
So we can suspend the rules and then we can act on the salary ordinance amendment, changing the operator-manager/IDAX coordinator to deputy director. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? So move.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr.
Fred.
For his, a second from Mr. Lemming to suspend the rules. Yeah, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Perez.
Aye.
Lemming.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Connor.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Pauling.
Yes.
Middlemore.
Yes. Sorry, Mr. Perez. Motion carries. The rules are suspended. Uh, the request would be to amend the salary ordinance to reflect the operation manager/IDAX coordinator to a deputy director. Angie, do you have everything you need?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to go through with the change of, I guess, the change of titles.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Lemming, a second from Mr. Pauling to amend the salary ordinance within the Grant County Central Dispatch E-911 budget to change the operation manager/IDAX coordinator job title to deputy director. Are there any questions from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Lemming.
Aye.
Pauling.
Yes.
Scott.
Aye.
Connor.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Perez.
Aye.
Middlemore.
Yes. Motion carries. If you would, would you send him an email on that? Thank you. Next item under new business, item B, Grant County Court Services, Melissa Stevenson with additional appropriation regarding the opioid restricted fund.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, so during the county council meeting in June, on the 21st of June last year, Judge Spitzer presented the recommendations for the use of the opioid settlement funds that were approved by our local Justice Reinvestment and District Council and the Grant County Commissioner. The plan included the salary benefits for two court services positions. One was a treatment coordinator and the other was a drug work probation officer. The plan was approved and the council appropriated funds to the treatment coordinator at that time. And then Court Services was pursuing and was eventually awarded a no-cost extension for Bureau of Justice Assistance grant that was and has been paying for the salary benefits for the drug work probation officer position. So no funding action needed to happen at that time for the drug work probation officer position. That position has allowed the drug work program to expand its capacity by 25%, so allowing more people in services. The no-cost extension now is set to expire September 30th of this year. So now what we're requesting is that the appropriation be made to cover the remaining salary and benefits for the remainder of 2024 for that drug work position, which is $19,929.52.
Are there any questions regarding the request? Angie, do you have everything you need?
Yes.
And it's been advertised, correct?
Yes.
If there's no questions, I entertain a motion. It'd be additional appropriation within the opioid restricted fund and the total's
This is the part that we already had approved back in June, and it's what's left over after the grant, correct?
So, um, the opioid settlement funds are like settlement funds, so they're not a grant. So, um, the grant that we have now is set to expire, that has been paid for the position.
Right.
Um, so it's the portion that didn't get appropriated because it didn't need to be.
So, so this grant ran out?
The Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant was a three-year grant, we got a four-year extension for, and it's due to expire September.
Right, but when it expired, what happened? So these people had hired on that grant.
Right, so that's why we had to ask to switch it over to the opioid settlement funds because it's a qualified expense. If not, then we'd be requesting the council to look at it on appropriating that position. So we're looking at ways to use the settlement funds in a way that is consistent with their required uses, meet those kind of parameters without having to ask for additional appropriation for those out of the general funds.
So it's coming out of opioid settlement funds?
Correct.
Sorry, I kind of took you off the side. So, Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the request based on the opioid settlement funds to cover the salary and benefits as stated.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Lemming and a second from Mr. Pauling to approve additional appropriation within the opioid restrictive fund. The salary would be $12,820, which includes the CCP stipend. FICA, $981 per, $1,821 Medicare, medical at $4,250.01. And then life at $57.51, bringing the grant total to $19,929.52. So for the next budget season, are you planning on putting this into opioid permanently?
Correct. Yeah, so we already have one for the, for the treatment coordinator, so they will fall, I believe, under the same budget for next year. Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Lemming.
Aye.
Pauling.
Yes.
Scott.
Aye.
Connor.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Perez.
Aye.
Middlemore.
Yes. Motion carries.
Do we still have a, um, an opioid? We met one time, right?
Yes.
Do we still have one thing going on?
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, late week, the 29th, yes. The school, I think, has volunteered to participate in that.
Okay, just checking. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on. Next item under new business, item C, Grant County Commissioner Ron Stewart with an additional appropriation regarding the county general fund as well as the ARPA spending plan.
Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, gentlemen. Uh, yeah, so we have two, uh, two orders of business in I-11, we're invited, we're invited, gentlemen. The first is additional appropriation, um, just requesting additional appropriation from, uh, I want to understand that's the insurance payment that we received from the insurance company for the fire out of Rockaway Road. Uh, so we're just asking for an additional appropriation of $151,884.
Oh, wow. It says to repair building and structure.
Yeah, so that's, that's just the insurance we, that's the insurance payment that we get, that's the payment we get from the insurance company for the fire. We're just transferring it over into that line item there.
Well, I understand that, but why would you put to repair building and structure if you ain't repairing none? You're gonna tear it down, right?
I think that's the name of the...
It's the account name.
That's the account name.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the request is to put $151,844 into an additional appropriation within the repair building and structure fund. I believe currently it's gotten appropriated over $800,000? Is that right?
I think we received, I think this is the...
This is the second.
I thought it was the third.
This is the third.
I think it's the third.
Because we've done, we've done the additional appropriation for 500, some of that one a month before, and now this one.
You might be right, Angie. I was thinking that there was two already and this is the third.
I think we're getting ready to receive the one we've heard. Yeah. I don't want justice in that, so.
So these are payments from the insurance company going into a pot, if you will.
Correct.
To do, and then to do what the plans were out there.
So I, as of right now, I think we're gonna tear it down and then try to build new. Okay, yeah. I, what we're gonna build new, I don't know yet what that looks like exactly. On the storage or...
Training facility is what they go make.
What's that?
Training facility.
I think that's part of, yeah, that's kind of like a, that's kind of like a wish list type thing. We'd like to have that out there as well.
So when it comes to building new, um, this fund would, it's, you know, only for repair, building and structure, wouldn't cover anything new.
Okay.
That's the way I...
You need to look at that building because if you take one of those wings off, metal looks like you did the other EMS building. And that could be the training room, storage, and everything, just one wing. But one, I've been out and thought through that building.
Yeah.
The one wing's just smoked.
Yeah.
It's probably saved a lot of money.
So we, okay, so I guess what I'm saying is we wouldn't have to appropriate it because you got, like I said, I think there's $800,000 in there, but you could always come back and, you know, we could, we could put this monies in the account unappropriated if you don't have a plan for it.
Yeah, as of, as of right now, yeah, as of right now, we don't, we don't have this solid set plan yet. I mean, the plan is to tear it down and build something else.
Yeah.
I don't know what that looks like yet, but...
I don't think building new would qualify coming out of this fund. It'd have to be transferred to another fund.
It would, it would need to be put into an appropriation and...
Haven't we done this before? We...
We did, we did. We put the other $500,000 in the repair building and structure because at the time, I don't know, we just...
I just was thinking about that as you was talking, so...
But we have since transferred out $60,000 to supplies, to buy supplies that may be replaced for EMS.
Yeah.
So, you know, we've kind of moved that around. We just kind of, we just appropriated it in here and, um, we're gonna utilize it where it needs to go.
Yeah.
Transfer it.
Angie, should we create a new account and start transferring those appropriated balances into the new account?
I wouldn't, at this time, I wouldn't do that. I would just try to keep track of what we've received in and when we do have the commissioner have, has a plan, go forward from that.
You have to, you got to move out of repair building structure to a new building, right?
Right. We have to transfer again.
Sir, you said there's one more payment coming? Have you signed off? I think...
Yeah, Justin came to me the other day and said something about another $30,000, so it's gonna be deposited.
Do you know is that gonna be it or will it be more? Do we have any idea?
I think there's even, there's another outstanding, but I do not know the amount of that one.
I don't either.
Is there, are there any other questions? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion.
And Angie, you know all these totals are in the...
Yeah, we keep track of all those receipts.
Make a motion to approve the request.
I have a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Scott to approve the additional appropriation of $151,844 to repair building and structure. Are there any other questions from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Connor.
Yes.
Scott.
Aye.
Hicks.
Yes.
Perez.
Aye.
Pauling.
Yes.
Lemming.
Aye.
Middlemore.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, the second order of business I want to go over with you, gentlemen, is the unappropriated ARPA money that you still have left, about 8.7 million. I think you have that list in your, in your packet there. Um, kind of, kind of my purpose, what I'm trying to want to do tonight, my purpose tonight is, is to, so at the top we have our, what the commissioners have decided that we'd like to...
I don't have that list.
Okay.
That raises good...
I, I think I got an extra one here for you, Mr. Connor.
It should be in there. It should have, you have two, right? So then, I should have...
I was looking at something else.
Let's just put it in a different spot.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So at the top is the, is kind of what the commissioners have, basically this whole list, the top and the bottom, if you look, that's what we've gotten legitimate requests through like a letter as far as asking for ARPA money. The top is what the commissioners have went through and we've decided this is kind of what, in perfect world, this is what we would spend our money on. Um, you can, you guys can look down through there, it's, they're all worthy projects. Everything on here is, is gonna be money, what I feel like is gonna be well spent. What I'm asking tonight is to kind of get a sense from you gentlemen as to what you're giving a sure thumbs up on, what you are definitely giving a thumbs down on that you're, that's, that you're not interested in, in spending the money on. And then, kind of what, kind of what I'll do is I'll go back and I'll say we have this, this, and this, let's go ahead and start moving on it. Because as you guys know, we have to spend this, we have to have, not spend it, we have to have appropriated this 8.7 by the end of the year. Um, so we're just trying to, you know, here we are, a third of the way into the year, so we're trying to kind of stay ahead of this a little bit. So my goal tonight is, is to find out at the top, this is what we would definitely support, uh, this is something that's not gonna happen, and then the things that's not gonna happen, I'll take it back to my colleagues and we'll kind of try to go down through the bottom there and make up that money with projects at the bottom, if that makes sense. I don't know if I explained that well enough, but that's, we're not asking for any money tonight as far, as far as this goes. We're just kind of trying to get a feel for what you guys are good with, what you're definitely not, and then come back again at some point with it, with an actual plan.
So I understand this, Ron. Am I to read this as the, the top portion where there, and then there's a break of two lines? That's what you're talking about?
Yes.
The top portion is what you really want to go for? And do I also understand correctly that to consider anything at the bottom, you'd have to cut somebody out of the top?
Yes, sir.
Because you're at a zero balance.
Yeah, yeah. So if you look here, Mr. Connor, at the very top, the unappropriated balance is 8.7, that's some change. And then if you look at the first line, which is ambulance purchase, 1.2, just simply subtract that 1.2 from the top and then that gives you the appropriate, you know, unappropriated balance, running balance on the right-hand side. And so you're absolutely right.
Okay.
So if you decided, you know, if the jail design was a, was a thumbs down for sure, then that's 1.5 million, you could go to the bottom and try to fill that, try to fill that with, so...
And maybe, did you give me just a brief description? What is Swayze Demo?
Yeah, so I would like to go ahead and take that off of there.
Okay.
That, that was a request from a while back.
Okay.
They've already cleaned up that building that collapsed and, and, uh, I, I noticed that was on there.
Okay.
When I was walking in, so I'd like to take that off there. If I could, you know, go ahead, Mr. Pauling, I'm sorry.
What's this riverfront project, 1.271?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll go ahead and I'll call, um, Robin, uh, Robin Vows is here and she'll just speak on that real briefly. Uh, that's a project for, uh, for Mayor Morrell. Um, they're doing a, they're doing a development and Ms. Vows can talk about it a little bit better than I can, but they're doing a development down on the river and he's just asking for just some help with the, with the design plans on it, so. This is, uh, Rodney Morrell's chief of staff.
Good evening, gentlemen. Uh, or is it in the presence of the council? Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Um, I stand here on behalf of Mayor Morrell's absence. He's at a conference regarding economic development. We are very serious about that in the Morrell administration. We're asking for your assistance. Um, the purpose is, Mayor Morrell asked me to share with you Mary and his involvement on a strategic initiative to enhance the development of the riverfront area. A longstanding vision of the city spanning over two decades, some you may recall that came up before. Despite the grant applications, evolving visions, unsuccessful attempts, I am unequivocally confident in the capabilities of the assembled team, my established connections, and the existing infrastructure to ensure a successful realization of this particular project. Nonetheless, additional support is required to navigate through the stages of the implementation. Uh, the riverfront project, we'll have a riverfront district that will, we tried to get you all the presentation, but technically something happened, we weren't able to do that today. So I do apologize.
I think they all have the, they have, should have received an email copy.
Wonderful. So we have the riverfront district, um, in that, um, we would have, um, one of the things we just had approved at the council last evening was the door district. Doors designated outdoor recreational area. We had a unanimous vote with the city council. So our riverfront district will have a door area that will be limited to the riverfront for this particular thing. The Cascades, has anybody heard of the Cascades? The Cascades is a projected, um, housing development, or it's not a housing development, apartment, market rate apartments that's been developed. We had the plans, Hallstead Architects did the original plans. We'd like to mimic or spearhead off of those along the riverfront on property that the city already owns. And our ask for you is to help facilitate that process that we see. Uh, the help we need is to tran, for this transformative project, we have some support. We've gotten grants from the next level trails that will lead into that area. We will be repaving the walkway that will lead into a segue into that area. Those are the grants that we've gotten. Um, so we need to help with crucial things as a site work, a site survey, soil testing, environmental abatement. Um, we're asking for 1.2 million and some, um, and we would greatly appreciate your collaboration and contribution, uh, to this to help our city get to another level of progress as well as the city progresses, the county progresses. So we want to partner in that initiative.
Can you help me picture a little more detail what you'd like to see in the riverfront district? Are we talking, I heard apartments, uh, are there businesses? What kind of things?
Honestly, the sky is the limit. Um, you, we want to attract, if you go to other places like Carmel or Fishers or Noblesville or Muncie or Fort Wayne or South Bend, they develop their riverfronts.
I was thinking of South Bend.
Yeah, beautiful. They have eateries, they have shops, they have some living on that area, some businesses on that area. And so we want to just seize whatever opportunity that will work for our area and attract development, growth, ultimately increase in revenue for both the city and the county. We get people to come and visit Mary. Mary can be a destination spot as well as it will enhance our quality of life for those of us that live here.
Mr. Connor, I had lunch with Mayor Morrell last week and he was telling me a little bit more about it. He pictures this first phase, this first part, is one of those mixed use where it'd be apartments or condos on the second floor, second level, and at the bottom would be retail.
Okay.
I love the idea.
I, I'm, you know, my district includes Jonesboro and Gas City area, and I'd like to see the whole riverfront through the whole county developed. I think it's one of our biggest natural or unnatural assets we have. We're starting to see people kayak on the, they won't let him miss Centwood now. I think the sky is the limit on that, but I, I'd like to see it not just be in Mary, I'd like to see it go through our area as well. I've had about 40 phone calls over this.
Good calls, I'm sure.
Bad calls. Bad calls, bar owners, all kinds of people, business owners. What, really?
In meticulous...
What are they saying, Chad? They don't want this.
They don't want, they don't want development.
They don't want that development. This is the same thing Seagull tried to do and it got shot down. Jess tried to do it, it got shot down.
I would hope our Jess tried.
Well, let's, let's be for real, guys. You took your dam out. We got watered out because we got rain. That ain't gonna mean, I tried to canoe down that, to kayak down that river from Gas City to Mary. You can't even take a kayak down.
Well, I see, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, I think that, I think we were told we had to do, didn't the city, wasn't the city told we had to hand out?
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, you're talking about promoting a river project that you don't have a river.
I, I got you.
Let me say a couple things. Yesterday at our council meeting, we also got a unanimous approval and, and out for public support for development of the riverfront project.
Well, I talked to Mr. Morrell, Morrell, Morrell Saturday, Mayor Morrell Saturday, and he borrowed them, "Really, really, you're gonna hurt them. You are gonna hurt them."
So can I do this? Okay. So, um, again, we got a resounding support for, we expressed to the bar owners that our goal is also to support their business, but we have to be progressive. We have to move forward. What will move us forward? The attraction of development, redevelopment, and those things. Um, there is... There is, I believe, a misunderstanding and a misconception with the bar owner, and that just continues to perpetuate. In the riverfront development, it allows for three-way licensing specific to and solely for the riverfront development area only. And so, there was a perception that because you're doing that, our license don't have value, I can't resell my license, you're going to drive us into bankruptcy. I categorically disagree with that, and several others do as well. Listen, I would be ridiculous to not support our existing businesses here, bar owners included. We want to give people options. Everybody, they go to a bar. Someone may want to go to a restaurant. It's not to say the riverfront is going to be full of bars. The riverfront could be full of a nice steakhouse, a seafood place where they want to sell wine and liquor, and you want to go have a good time. Those are the things that not only will enhance our lives here, but as well attract external people to spend money here in our community. I think the bar owners, I can understand being skittish, but I want to say that, listen, we're in a free market world here. Marion has to progress. If we don't do anything, we're going to stay right where we are, and that's not sufficient for us now. I understand the history of the old administrations. I don't say anything disparaging about them, but what I will say, we have a phenomenal leader in Mayor Morell. He has exhibited, continues to exhibit, the leadership, the innovation, the creativity, developing those relationships, tapping all different revenue streams, whether it be grant money, TIF, whatever avenue, developers, investment. And so, I think Marion is fine. I know it is uncharted territory, but if we don't do it, listen, we just talked about how many cities that have done it successfully. We got like 20 letters from state representatives, AIM, other cities that developed their riverfront, and talked about the progress and the enjoyment that now is their riverfront. And so, a lot of something new for us in Marion. I'd like us to band together with this negative connotation toward the change. We have to change, or we're not going to get better.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm disagreeing.
No, I, I'm.
I'm, I'm a big supporter of Mayor, Mayor Morell. I was a big supporter. But the first thing we got to do is clean this place up before we start worrying about building. We need to clean it up.
Can I ask?
It'll build itself up.
If I, what, what bar owners have the concern specifically?
Allen at the Green Olive, Bart Clevenger, almost every one of them. I just talked to them. I had business owners that own other businesses that are manufacturers and founders that are really concerned about how you guys made this, how you made this district, how you designed this district. And I got calls this morning about this.
The district is consistent with the legislation that's came out from the state. So, that's what, how that district came out. It's not like a covert operation. It was mandated from the state and the legislature from the state. In terms of.
Couldn't, can I ask where that is at, location was?
Where is what?
The district you're referring to? I just didn't know where I was.
That's why I wanted you guys to have your map, let me tell you that.
I, did Marcus put that on the TV, do you know?
Did he get the first street, the brass group back down, cut back over?
Oh, I was thinking, Wall Back Avenue, just Wall Back Avenue.
Just one, there's a lot.
I know, it's not, it's not easy.
Those sides of the river.
No, just this side, just this side.
Okay. I was thinking it was across the Y in CA.
No, it's on this side. It's on the south side of.
I think Seagull.
The real curve.
Yeah, I'm picturing like from Foggies, turn around to the 18 bridge. Is that what we're talking about?
You know, the Girl Scout cabin, right?
Okay, so farther. I'm following you, I'm on.
Yes.
Wall Back Avenue, that's, that's Wall Back.
Where that, um, the cascade will sit on that south side of the street. That property kind of cat a corner. Here's McClure. The cascade would be across there. That's the housing that will be there. But listen, we've got people that were waiting for the passing of this riverfront development, investors, developers. We have a plethora of interest in Marion and growing Marion and opening Marion up for business. And so, we will always support our current owners, but there always has to be competition, free market, and the key is it's life experience that we residents have here.
Two valid concerns I'm hearing is, when Chuck mentions, we may, we don't have a river. I have concerns about how little water is in that. I, I, what I'm hearing is we got to give the Seagull a chance to come back because we were mandated to take out that dam. If it stays just a dribble, I'd be very concerned about trying to, to develop a dribble, except if you visit Brown County, or you visit like Pigeon Forge and places like that, they build up all kinds of industry around a creek. It's amazing.
And you've got more water in our river.
Well, that's, yeah, that's a good point. The other valid point that I, I think these business owners have, I can understand their concern, is competition. That's what I'm hearing. They're worried about maybe unfair competition. And I guess, as an attorney here in town, if I heard that you wanted to develop a lawyer district, then bring in all the big firms out of, out of town, come in and compete against me, I, I'd have a pause. But I also hear what you're saying about free market economy. And again, I've said this over and over, and I feel like I've broken records sometimes. What do we welcome in Grant County, Indiana? It seems like everything gets shot down, folks come up for air. I mean, you, I, you know, prisons, peaking plants, confined animal lots, solar, wind. What in the hell do we welcome here? What I'm hearing is an area with some businesses, maybe some tourism, to get folks to come here and enjoy our river. I hope our river can support it, and I, I think we'll look at it. By your valid concerns, and I think there is, very appropriate to bring them up and think about it.
I think the biggest concern they, they told me is, these guys are just going to get these license for $1,000 from the state, and all these bar owners paid 25,000, 20,000 for theirs. Okay? So, and, and I know that Foggies and the pub is into that, in your little district there, right? So, they can get a thousand dollar license, and they can sell their liquor license for big money. You know, that's a disadvantage to the rest of them.
Those liquor licenses have been big money.
Yes.
In the past, they have been, technically, you can't buy and sell them, but effectively.
Right.
When the bars change hands, that's what's happening, and it is big money. And there's been a limit on the number of them. They're not a dime a dozen. Do you know if, under this program, new bars or places without liquor licenses can get those for $1,000? Is that true?
So, let me share a couple things with you. This riverfront district is developed as a result of Senate Bill Number 20, the Senate Bill Number 20, if anyone cares to look at that. With respect to the liquor license, it's, um, I, I said it last night, and I just have to be honest, and I mean no disrespect, but listen, this riverfront development far supersedes a liquor license. And that's not to diminish the concerns of our bar owners and the objections of them. I get it. However, we got to find a way, we got to work together to sustain them, but as well to open Marion up for progress, and this action does that. Relevant to the liquor license, they have, Marion has, and it's locked up, and I can't tell you the correct number currently, but we had no liquor license. So, if a chain or if someone wanted to come to Marion, like a Chili's, or a Friday's, or anything of that nature, they don't have access to a liquor license. The liquor license that the current bar owners are unrestricted. So, I can own a bar out on South Washington, I can go out on North Kim Road, pardon me, and own a bar with my liquor license. The liquor license for the riverfront district are specific to the riverfront district. You can't buy a liquor license for the riverfront district and operate on South Washington or North Kim Road. It is specific to, solely for the riverfront district. It's to stimulate that investment in the riverfront. Those are non-transferable, um, three-way license. So, we'd be able to sell, sell wine, beer, liquor.
Non-transferable?
Yeah, like you can't, like the unrestricted, the current bar owners can perhaps sell theirs for whatever profit. You can't do that with these. You can't turn around and sell them or anything.
So, what happens if one of the businesses with that license go back to the state?
Yes. And each decision about it is made by the ATC. So, we as the city, the mayor can make the recommendation. We decided we want to work with the council and have that support as well. They can make their recommendation, but it would go to the state for the final stamp of approval for those riverfront liquor license.
Robin, I appreciate you being here and sharing the information that you have about the project, and want to welcome you to the county council. I think this is the first time that you have presented before.
This is your first.
Okay, well, welcome back then.
Thank you.
I'm trying to understand the, the structure and then have an understanding of the public-private partnership that, that would take place in this. I mean, you mentioned being a free market, typically in a free market, we're going to have investors, we're going to have developers that's going to come in, and they're going, they're going to raise their funds, and they're going to make the project work. So, I, I guess I'm just trying to understand what that, what that partnership looks like, because you mentioned it's city-owned ground. So, I'm not sure if this, is the city getting into, into this business? Is the city selling off the property? And then even beyond that, what exactly, if, if the 1.2 million dollars is granted, where does that 1.2 million dollars go to?
That 1.2 million, I'll read what he wrote on this specifically. To successfully conclude the transformative project, active participation support from the county is imperative. Specifically, we're seeking your assistance in crucial areas such as the site work, the survey, the soil testing, and the environmental abatement. The estimated financial requirement for these essential services total 1.271 million. Your collaboration is key to the aspect of this significantly, significant contribution for the reality of the project. So, it helps us get started, it helps us prepare the land so that we, when we attract, attract investors and so forth, we are prepared. There's another portion that you had in there, and I believe it speaks to, we have different avenues. We have ARP money ourselves, we're buying in as well. We have land that we own, we have TIF dollars, we have a TIF that we also would do, and then we would also look at our investment.
Now, you, you're talking about these apartments. Is Marion going into the ground business?
Well, absolutely not.
Because you're going to sell them?
I won't, we won't be.
Well, Marion.
That's why we're looking for investors for that.
So, you, Marion, you, this 1.2 million ain't to build apartments?
No, it's to prepare the site, the, and, and.
And the building, and the, and the spot where Mr. Morel, Mayor Morell told me, is right behind the pub, correct? What's that? The pub that is built, or the.
The Irish one?
Yes, yes.
That's Irish pub, right? That ground used to be the old Frank's Pistons. It will not pass. It'll be empty. There's never been nobody there.
My God.
Yeah, I guarantee it will.
What did you say it was?
Frank's Pistons.
Frank's Pistons. And we'll have, and not saying a word.
And, and that property, the concrete, it belongs to Marion. It belongs to someone else, correct? Behind the pub, the, the concrete pad.
There's a piece that's Marion, there's a piece that's otherwise. We are working on putting all those pieces together.
But Marion doesn't, I'm, my question is, but they don't own that.
I don't want to say yes or no, because I'm not certain on that specific. I can't tell you that I'll get right back to you with that answer.
Well, I know the answer, because the mayor told us that.
Well, you're asking a question right now. Okay.
Isn't part of site preparation, the checking to see if it passes?
Yes, checking the soil and all that.
We, we do, we have.
So, why would you not check the soil and do all that first? Then make sure you can even build the thing.
Have you priced them?
Huh?
Have you priced the, those?
Checking soils? Yes, I, I've been involved in that.
It's expensive.
Yes, but, but my point is, Mike, it's, it's, if you're going to build something, and you want to come to us for 1.2 million dollars, would you not make sure it would pass before, and make sure you could build it there before you guys, you're jumping the gun, you're putting the horse in front of the, in front of the horse?
Isn't the, isn't part of their request for the money to do that checking?
But why should the county pay for that checking when it's in the city?
Because we're a city within the county.
No, but wait, goodness, you got 6.5 million ARP money, right?
No, we don't have that yet. We'll spend some on the city.
On Saturday, you had 6.5 million.
No, that's not true.
Okay, well, maybe the mayor didn't understand some.
Well, that's not true.
Okay.
I'm sure he's aware of what we spent.
Well, I just talked to him Saturday at my, at one of my functions.
So, do you want to receive what I'm letting you know?
You give it right there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm letting you know what I know. As the Chief of Staff, I'm letting you know what I know. In addition, we've got several grants here. You mentioned blight. People bring up blight when you want to progress. We are working on the blight probably more aggressively than any previous administration. We got rewarded a grant for, a magic grant for 1.5 toward, to match the CBA, the sidewalks in the street, I probably said the wrong acronym, with the sidewalks in the street. We got, and are using some of our economic development money to tear down blight. We put another half million in our blight fund with the existing dollars. We are aggressively working to reward cleaning the city up as well. We've been in for three and a half months, not a whole four months. It's not an instant thing for something that has accrued over 30-plus years. But we are, that is our mantra to clean up Marion, and that's one of the reasons I serve is to do that, and I exert my effort toward that, and I'm serious when I say that. We, I believe, have a perfect mix of innovation and creativity and follow-up and cleanup. We're assembling a great city team to do that, and we, as we speak, have put dollars toward that. We have the opportunity potentially for more TIF dollars to help up, help us with our development, and this is a process. You can always say, ah, this won't work, this won't work. Listen, we got to try it, and we are an intricate part of the county, and so, it concerns me that you say we're different and we're not. We are your biggest municipality within the county. And so, at some point, we have to stop this, us and them, and maybe consider being we, because when we is a municipality, when you is a county. So, if you have your biggest municipality in your county not progressing, what is the progress of the county? And so, we're working diligently toward that. We ask for your support. Thank you, Mr. Bowden, for your questions, and everyone else, and I'll take any more if you have them for me.
Robin, I may add one. Are you aware that, like, are you utilizing any construction firms, consulting firms, anybody at, at this point for this project?
I'm not involved in that. The mayor actually is, but absolutely, he's really diversifying and shopping around for food he believes will give us the best quality deal and the structuring of that deal. And that hasn't came into full fruition again. We're four, three and a half months into the administration. This was picked up, it was a part of a plan before, you may recall, it was part of the plan, five-year plan, 10-year plan. And so, we already save dollars if not going out, hitting another architect to come up those plans and structures. Now, we are looking at the land and seeing what's feasible and what we can utilize and what we can.
So, the city is not working through any, any current point for this project?
So, you have no consultant?
Yes. When you say consultant, you talking engineering?
Yes, consultant, that's what.
Yeah, construction or engineering or?
I, I say he's consulting with legal in terms of the engineering people that have asked him.
Robin, thank you. I really appreciate how informative you've been to shed light on all these issues. You're very welcome. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
You guys have a good one.
Thank you.
How about you, Eric?
I'm glad to.
Ron, what's the recycle center cover? Is that a roof?
Yeah, I'll just kind of touch on these really quick. I'll kind of, there's, there's some notes out here to the side on, on some of the, on some of the items. Uh, Mr. Connor, to answer your question, there's a, and, and Mr. Poling, you might know better than me, but I guess there's a cover on the recycling center. It's a, it's somehow like a material and it's just been there.
Yeah, cloth.
Yeah, it's cloth.
Yeah.
And from what I was told, it's been there for 20, 25 years, maybe is what, is the number.
It looks pretty good.
Does it? I, I honestly don't know. I, I-
My wife goes out every week. My wife goes out every week. She's a great recycler.
Good for her.
So, yeah, I, I was told it's been out there about 20, 25 years and it's starting to get run down. So that's what that is.
Been that long?
That's what I was told.
Probably, you know, probably about that since it's in that recycling.
It's a 20 to 25. The ambulance purchase kind of speaks for itself. The annex elevators, it sees elevators right out here. That would be a, that would be a complete, um, replacement. Uh, the recycling center we talked about, the seal repair, the annex, annex exterior. Uh, I guess the jail was done a few years ago, so this is to do the, uh, this part out here, the actual, the, uh, actual, uh, complex. Courthouse repairs, there's a little side note on that. Uh, the jail design, if you got, if you gentlemen remember, DLZ, the company that did our jail study, shot us a price of 4.5 million. Uh, I talked to a couple of different people and they said that, uh, quite honestly, that was a ridiculous number, that that number should be more along the lines of 1.5 to two. So, um, in this here, we're just asking for the 1.5 on it. Uh, highway equipment, there's a, a note next to that as well. Sheriff's equipment, uh, we'd like to get them, uh, some non-lethal weaponry and an off-road vehicle. Uh, the off-road vehicle, from what I've been told, is more of like a, sheriff, you might, you might know this, more like a gator-type of vehicle. Yep. And then he could also probably tell you the non-lethal weaponry. Um, if you have any questions about that. Uh, Mr. Middlesworth, he's next to, you might have more information on it than me, how it's safety videos. Uh, is it, that has to be, those have to be swapped out by June or July of 2025?
Yeah, it's approaching pretty quick.
Yeah, so it sure is.
I know that they're, they really don't know the ask on that yet. Um, they're, we as a county paid for a, um, like a repeater, about $19,000 to put the state channel on or the portables.
Yes, sir.
So they was gonna, I think they have six of them, they're testing.
Yep.
Sheriff's Department, so they'll know a little bit more later.
Correct, yep.
And so, yeah, as far as their, that number, I don't know if that's correct.
It's, you, you're absolutely right. We have 1.6 on there, as you gentlemen can see. Uh, I was told today, I did some checking on it, that that possibly could be cut in half. So whatever you, whatever you folks feel like you want to do on that. Uh, township fire radios, that's getting, uh, that's true. Pretty much getting the volunteer fire departments to do radios as well. And then obviously we discussed the riverfront project. Um, some items down, if you guys, if you, if you have any specific questions about the items below, I'd be more happy to answer that as well. Um, broadband is 2.5, let me just say this real quick. Uh, it's 2.5, but we're working in, we're very, we're in the very preliminary stages of, we've had one meeting, but we're working with a company named Mainstream. Uh, they're funded mainly through grants. We might be able to get county-wide broadband at no cost and without having a dividend, without that 2.5. Uh, but that's in the very early stage, so I don't have a ton of information on that, but we're working on that.
What's the Cardinal Greenway thing?
Yeah, so, uh, that's, that's 300,000 and what that will do, and Mr. Perez might have some information on this, but there's a separation. It stops at Jonesboro right now. It basically goes to Sweets and then stops at Jonesboro. And it doesn't pick up until Gaston. And years ago, from what I was told, uh, years ago, there was a push to buy some of that land out there to connect it. Uh, but the, uh, some farmers out there didn't want to come in through their property, so they, they bought that land and wouldn't sell it. So what the Cardinal Greenway is looking to do now is they're looking to connect from Gaston to Upland. Uh, and then, so there's 300,000, that wouldn't do the connection, but from what I've been told, so what, what they're trying, I think they're doing it in maybe like three phases, from Gaston to Upland, and then there's going to be a piece in Upland. And then ultimately it's going to run from Upland along State Road 22, kind of in front of the Walmart distribution. And it's going to eventually connect in Jonesboro by going that way. So it's kind of a long way to get, to get there, but that's really the only option that they have. And that 300,000 is going to help with the Upland piece.
That answers my questions about the lower section. I, I just would like to express some support for the King's Academy demo. I think that's a negligible amount. I'd really like for you to find some way to fund that. I mean, I know it's got some, there's some private interest there, but that is one, literally the biggest building in Jonesboro. And, you know, we've been talking about helping riverfront communities. Well, that would help Jonesboro, which is basically one big riverfront community. And it would really help us. We've got a TIF district proj- project going on. Uh, I, if I win the big one, the lottery, I'm going to be a benefactor and I'd probably buy up all that property on Main Street and turn that into a nice riverfront, old-time riverfront community. And anyway, that's a dream, but, uh-
I could speak a little bit to the King's Academy project.
Please.
Area plan had a meeting that I was involved with as well as mayor of Jonesboro and King's Academy. Um, they're looking at, uh, maybe some grant dollars, but the building has to be owned by Jonesboro. And then it would have to sit as a green space for five years. They could, they could go after using grant money to take it down. But I think they're at the end of the grant cycle, so they'd be for the next grant cycle. And then, um, the, their main power runs through the old building. And so they want to get that main power moved first, and that's step one. So I know they was gonna, uh, work, um, look at working with the community foundation and maybe get some grant dollars there.
So maybe there's some alternatives to the ARPA?
Yeah, so I mean, um, I think that we still need to, you know, look at ARPA dollars for that, but I think they're, they're working on some other avenues.
Do you know what? You've heard about the, the immediate problems with the kids getting in and stuff like that? Is there, is there anything coming sooner rather than later to-
I mean, I think they'd want to move, as far as getting into the old building, I haven't, they didn't really discuss anything as far as security or safety.
Okay.
It was more about step one, getting the tower off the building.
Yeah, that's, I hear about that a lot because I, I, of course, attend all the Jonesboro City Council meetings. And the police, I've heard from them, the kids are getting in there, they're doing the viral videos, looking for ghosts. And that place is, uh, you remember, uh, the high school in Fairmount, how bad it got with floors collapsing and things like that? Police officers were scared death to go in there because they get right through the floor. So, you know, it's really a dangerous building. And, uh, so, boy, the sooner the better.
I, I made a note here, Mr. Connor, I'll definitely talk to my two colleagues, they expressing your concern and, and your wish on that. And maybe there's something, maybe there's something we can do even if it's not selected.
That'd be great. Anything would help. Thank you, Ron.
Mr. Stewart, sir, we had a meeting with the buyer, I guess all of them, right? All the county mutually. They said $30,000 is not enough to cover everything they need. To get each fire department here, do a little notice, it's 13,000, $30,000. Uh, even Bob Jackson told us it wasn't enough.
Did they, did they give you any indication as to what that number looks like more?
50 and 100?
Each?
Each.
I get, uh, what, what might be, what might be a good idea is for, like, that right there is to discuss it tonight. And then, uh, maybe you gentlemen would want to, want to comment about it as far as, whatever, whatever you feel is wise, but, um-
Why don't we have, uh, like, three council members meet with you between now and the next meeting to go over this list again?
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great.
And we got time to stay.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was thinking, Mr. Poling, is that this is kind of a lot of information to be given, you know, definite thumbs up or definite thumbs down on the night, so. And you said that number was 50 to 100?
Yeah, I think that the studies that was more, probably 70-plus for most departments.
Yeah, because they need, uh, reboots and something like paint jobs.
Paint jobs. I know Mr. Jackson was working on that.
I know some of the department needs more radios. They're not all of them need the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll, I'll follow Mr. Jackson, try to get some more information on that then, so.
Don't we have an ambulance that's due to come to us very soon? It has already arrived.
I think it's-
Yes, we've gotten our first invoice, you know, they're going to be on June 1st.
Yep.
So that would be something.
So we need to address that tonight.
If you want to do soon or do not.
I mean, I'm fine with taking action on just one of them if you want.
For the ambulances, yeah, because we are good to that to save their, their interest.
Yeah.
So it sounds like we can go on the ambulances tonight and then-
I'll be fine with the next one too, because I may know and then-
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've been stuck on that elevator. I'm just-
But you know, when it comes to elevators, there's only a couple companies anyway to stop.
Yeah, one other to notice.
So do we just make a motion? Is there anything in particular we have to do to expend money out of our budget?
I don't think so. I think we just make a motion to approve those two.
Are you ready?
Sure.
Mr. President, I'm making a motion to approve out of the county ARPA funds, the purchase of the four ambulances at 1.2 million dollars and the expenditure of $650,000 for the annex elevators.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Scott, a second for Mr. Poling to approve the purchase of the ambulances, uh, for those at 1.2 million, as well as the annex elevators. That's up to 650,000. Are there any other questions from the members? Public input? Come to the podium and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Michael Duke. Um, this may be a little off from what your motion is, but it relates to the economic development issues that Mr. Stewart, Mrs. House, were discussing. And I'll say, I was at the Marion Common Council meeting last night and witnessed the various testimonies, public comments of different factions of the community, uh, desiring to see this development in the riverfront area. And I don't mean to be caustic, and a couple of you may recognize that I've been critical of economic development, uh, parties in the past. But in this case, and I will say that I, I've plucked a lot of friends out in the community, but we need economic development here in Marion as well as Grant County. There needs to be positive types of economic development to bring concerns in here that bring jobs, that bring livelihood into the community. As well known back, quality of life is one of the issues that, uh, site selection committees or interests will look at. And we need to have that kind of quality of life to be able to track concerns. But it needs to be, I believe, it needs to be, uh, high-level, good-producing, strategic type of interest, manufacturing interest, high-technology manufacturing interest, strategic, um, manufacturing interest that will help, aren't only our community, but our state and our nation, and that, uh, provide value to support our way of life here in the United States. Um, I would recognize that any interest that comes and brings opportunities into this community is a wise thing to proceed and to do. I would caution, and this is the cause of anxiety, is that I've had enough experience in this community to recognize that there's the old boys' network that always seems to come into play when different things happen. I would caution that, that consideration, keep that in mind as to what the true interests are of an economic development, uh, opportunity might present when you're considering things like investing monies to the extent of what, 1.5 million or probably $2 million into, uh, into the potential development or redevelopment of Grant County as well as the city of Marion.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Rick Kids, uh, 2501 North River Road. Um, I, I didn't actually see that list, but I thought maybe 1.5 million for jail plans was part of, um, I don't think right now anybody's on the same page of how big a jail you're doing or anything else. Oh, no, you can prove any, any funding for plans because winded up with 10 different plans and start paying for them now. Um, so that was something, I, I think, um, my opinion, why the bartender might be upset at bar owners, uh, is that its new competition is funded by the government. So, and, and they're going to get the benefits, um, of this project. Obviously, somebody's going to end up owning it. So some private individual will own this project after it has all this government funding. And so I don't know how much it is. Is it a 12, 15 million dollar project? But is it $10 million? It's going to be funded by grants and funds and everything like that. So somebody's going to invest $5 million and get a $15 million project. I guess that, I think, is the concern with that project, because I don't, I don't think everybody's got all, you know, the, the full plans of exactly what that is. And also, from what I've heard, they've got to get more ground, because there's not enough ground for parking. So they've got to acquire other ground over there in order to make that project work. Um, there's just not enough room to fit all of that, unless they're going to downsize the project, which could defeat the purpose of the project. So just, but I think you guys are all on that. So, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Kids.
Yeah, you want to come back up, you kid?
Thank you again. I'm speaking as a public. I think, um, listen, um, what incentivizes economic development? So I just heard the gentleman say that there's a problem because of the potential for private investors to benefit from government funds. Well, I think that's what happens all along right now anyway. It's my opinion. I feel that what starts, what can propel a project? So the federal government decided we need to do some things to stimulate. We need to get these dollars down to the state and they came up with legislation to facilitate that. The state government says, based on whatever the criteria, we need to filter these dollars into the counties and the municipalities to stimulate economic development. Small-town America is not developing. They don't have the resources. We're in the cycle of factories going out. We're in that cycle of downturn, so to speak. We, and here in Marion alone, have experienced that with the RCA plant, uh, the downsides of dip, gentle tire, those different types of things. So what incentivizes, what supports, what helps that stimulation? It's grant dollars. Right now, here today, you're talking about, um, building a jail, there'll be private contractors that benefit from government money greatly from home. Um, and I get what you're saying. I know it's on a larger scale, but I would like for us to seize the opportunity to grow, to partner together and work out whatever kinks or questions, let's continue that conversation. I'd ask that you would consider, just consider the full of it and the impact that it will have for us here in our community. And I want to thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public input? Uh, roll call, please.
Scott?
Aye.
Poling?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Fix?
Yes.
Perez?
Aye.
Lenny?
Aye.
Middlesworth?
Yes. Motion carries. So we approved the purchase of the four ambulances as well as the annex elevators.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Hey, before you leave, I got some other questions asking.
Okay.
I think Mr. Kids may be alluded to a little bit. Where, where do we stand with the jail project and?
Yeah, so-
So I have a contract with the VAR, V A R D, that was signed and I had sent it to the attorney, council's attorney. And this contract talks specifically about approximately $5,000 in various capital projects and bonds. I was just questioning on our council attorney if you had the authority to sign that.
As far as I know, why wouldn't we?
And because typically, the council deals in bonds and the issues of bonds and, you know, funding of projects because we're the fiscal body.
That might, that's probably a question from Mr. Persinger. You said you sent that to him?
I sent this to the council's attorney.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
The county council's attorney.
I can check who Mr. Persinger...
And so, yeah, I guess, what are, what are your thoughts on this contract?
Is it 5,000 or 5 million?
I mean, not 5,000, 5 million. Did I say 5,000? 5 million. Sorry, 5, 5 million.
It seems pretty standard as far as...
Well, I mean, you can't bind the county council. It says here in page five or six, it says, "We understand that you have the authority to bind the issuer by the contract with us and that you are not a party to any conflict of interest relating to the proposed offering. If our understanding is not correct, please let us know." I just wanted to make sure that you know that you can't bind the county council.
Again, I'll talk to Mr. Persinger about that. He, he reviewed the contract and said it's good to go.
I talked to another order and he said it's almost like a debit. Try to bind it, bind it.
Yeah, I'll leave that up to, I'll leave that up to the legal team.
Okay, so what, what was the idea of this?
So, you're talking about bonding?
Yeah.
So, down the road, if, if that's the way that we need to help pay for the jail, are there options available?
Just 5 million though.
Correct.
And then I seen that another contract where, I'm not trying to pick on you by no means, but I just want my questions answered.
I know this is on the agenda.
It's not appropriate to add it, in my opinion. I think it would take, it needs to be published in advance. If that's on the agenda, or at least a motion, I think adding it to the agenda, probably.
Well, I mean, as the president, I have authority to add and take things away on the agenda.
Right. I can do the best I can, but I can't...
Okay, I mean, if you can't answer, you just say, I don't know.
Sure, definitely.
Then I, there was another contract that was Connor Sullivan. And I just was wondering, did, did your attorney approve that, Kyle Persinger?
That I don't know. I checked with him.
And then I had emailed you earlier in the week asking about rules and procedures. I don't know if you've received that email. Or, and I also emailed Mr. Persinger about the commissioner's rules and procedures.
Okay.
And I was just, I would like to know what the rules and procedures are, if you have any.
State, state of Indiana county commissioner rules. Yeah, there's no, I guess if you're asking, there's a handbook.
Yeah, there's no handbook?
Yeah. And I think so, I mean, as we add things in the minutes, I think we kind of go by those as well. Yeah, but no, there's no, at least I'm the newest commissioner. I wasn't given one, so...
Yeah, I know, when I come, as president of the county council, that was the first thing that I made sure that we updated our rules and procedures, you know, whether...
That might be, that might be something to...
I was just, I mean, like I say, I'm not picking on you. I just want to know if there is a set or not.
For, for me, it was, it was, you jump in the water and swim.
Yeah, they don't send us to school or anything when we start these jails.
Yeah, there was no roadmap to follow. So, that's, that's what I found out in 14, 15 months, so...
So, does bond is for future jail?
Yes, if we get, if we get to that point, yes. If we get to that point, then that's, that's going to, that gives us another tool to go out to pay for it. Issue, issue bonds to...
I think it's absolutely appropriate, Mr. Connor. I think that transparency is something that, that both bodies need to, to, you know, to discuss, I guess.
I'm not arguing with you at all.
Mr. Middlesworth, do you want to see, would it be easier for you to get, you mentioned free councilmen to be with me? Is it easier for you to schedule that?
Yeah, I can schedule that.
If you could schedule, maybe give me, just maybe give me two options?
Okay.
With, with this gig and my, and my nine-to-five job, it's pretty busy. So, if you could just say, here's a couple dates and times that work for us, I'll make, I'll make one more.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Is there any other questions?
No, I think that's exactly appropriate to have that, the conversations between the two bodies.
Yeah. Anything else, gentlemen?
I think that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
What, are we giving a committee?
We'll have a committee.
How are we deciding that?
How are we deciding that?
I think we already have a jail...
We have a jail committee. But as far as committee for ARPA, I don't think we do.
Just thinking again, maybe I'm dreaming.
So, we'll move on to old business. Under old business, I had a mayor, Grant County Sheriff Del Garcia, with the judicial appropriation regarding the general fund.
Round the money, Sheriff.
That sounds out there. Good evening, gentlemen, Mr. President of the council. But thank you for having me here. Not on the agenda. If you remember, I think it's, first let me apologize for the last meeting. I ended up going homesick on a Tuesday. I was in bed for four days straight. And to be honest with you, the council meeting really wasn't on my mind at that time. So, I do apologize for that. I didn't relay that information to my chief if it would have been... Like I said, I would have been there for four days straight. So, I do apologize for that. Ever if you remember, a couple of months ago, maybe, I talked about different options to reduce our jail population. One of those options was to house our inmates at other facilities. So, we're coming before you tonight to start that process and we're requesting $400,000 to be appropriated in line items that we could pay for those, for those inmates as we start finding locations. That price could go up in the future depending on how many we find. But we want to kind of start at a lower level and see if we can locate it. I know right now, we have three inmates that are currently in another facility. We think we may have nine that can go to a facility if this money is appropriated. And then obviously, we'll continue to build from there. What I did want to do is, is ask you to appropriate what it would take to house 80 to 85,000 that we can get there. So, I just want it appropriate enough to, to get us started in the process. I do want to tell you that when I look back at some numbers, just so you know that we're doing our best to get the jail population down. In March, we owe our 43 nonviolent offenders in the month of March alone. And then we sent, we were only able to send two females to DOC. And the reason for that was because DOC had no beds for males. So, we are constantly working to, to get that population down. Next week, we'll be sending, I think, 10 to DOC. So, we are working on that, to do that. So, so we're doing our part to get the population down. I think our biggest obstacle, as I stated before, is going to be able to find beds for our inmates. But I think this is going to get us started. We do have one jail that has committed to giving us nine beds to start off with.
I've been watching your numbers.
We currently have around 20, 27 inmates that are doing their time in our jail or sitting, or doing their sentence in our jail. And that's what we'll start with, to try to put them in other locations. Because what that does for us, that means we don't have to worry about transporting them from the other jail to court. So, where we're going to find those and that, that's the route we're going to go. But like I said, I think we have facilities that could possibly give us nine, nine beds. So, I'll answer any questions that you guys may have.
I've been watching your, the inmates. You guys did pretty good. You got her down to about 53. Now, we're back to 98.
98.
Today, we're 98 up. But you got it down to about 53.
And I come and go with where we're at, people.
Here's my question. Why does not the judges use those TVs? We do. What I've been told.
You've been told wrong. The, the video system is used in every court except for juvenile court and Marion City Court. We currently, I had a meeting with Mayor Morell this week about getting the video system up and running at Marion City Court. And I think what, I think the numbers you're looking at is, obviously, you can't do video court for a trial. That has to happen there. But we are doing all the arraignments, or a lot of the arraignments on video court, through the video. We just can't do juvenile because apparently, there's some attorneys that don't want to do juveniles through the video court system. But every other court, we do use a video.
And do they use it regularly, Sheriff?
Yes, yes.
That's not what I...
I don't know who's telling me your information, but they, I'm telling you, we use them regularly. Does that mean every single person goes through it? Now, I think we have a lot better.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So, we do use them regularly. In fact, we're trying to, like I said, just met with, with Mayor Morell and we'll get our system updated there. I'll also want to remind you that there's a difference between arraignment and being adjudicated. Because I understand that you were saying that 92% of our inmates haven't been arraigned. That's not true. 92% of our inmates haven't been adjudicated yet. Because we have 48 hours, we have a timeframe.
They've been, they've said guilty or not guilty. Now, they're just waiting for...
Now, there's 92% are still waiting.
They are.
So, those numbers are correct there, but we have a timeframe that we have to get them arraigned, so...
Sheriff, wouldn't the jail numbers also be affected by the number of arrests? I've been told that MPD's arrests are up 17%. Is that an accurate figure? And would that affect your numbers in the jail?
Yeah, that would definitely affect them, so... The thing you got to remember though, if you have to remember, is nonviolent offenders that we can OR, we OR. Now, what the citizens have to think about, so let's say Mr. Scott gets arrested for a minor, or driving off suspended history. I know, sorry to have rumored, Sheriff. So, let's say, for instance, he gets arrested...
Wait a minute, let me start my video here.
So, let's say he gets arrested for that. He gets indicted in the court, right? He doesn't show up. What happens? They get a warrant for their arrest. We bring him in, bring him into the jail. A lot of times, we'll still OR him. The judge will say, okay, we can OR him. We assign him a court date. He doesn't show up to court again, so another warrant's put out. So, what the citizens have to, have to decide is, do we want to keep letting them out instead of holding them accountable since they're not showing up to court? So, as you can tell by, in March, we owe our 43 people. Out of those, I don't know how many will end up getting warrants. If you look at our warrants list that come out, a lot of them are probation violations, failure to appear and things of that nature. We have more of those warrants than we do active or new cases. So, so when they're saying, if we have someone that's a nonviolent offender in our jail, a lot of times, it's because they're, they keep reoffending. And at some point, you got to say, hey buddy, I gave you a break three times already. You're going to be in jail. So, you know, we kind of have to weigh those things. And plus, you know, ORs are up to the judges, not to us. So, they'll decide, and they do get tired of, hey, I OR'd this person two or three times already. And they keep failing to appear in court. And so, the nonviolent offenders that we have are normally because of those reasons. But we do our best to get those out that we can get out and we'll continue to do that. In fact, we're adding another charter. We're getting with the judges tomorrow to add, because right now, as I told you before, last year, we met with both city court judges and we got a list, this list of charges on what we could OR people on without having to call the judge. But we're going to add illegal possession of alcohol by consumption. But that will be an OR rule, thanks, without having to contact the judge so we can get them processed. Once they come under, or below the legal limit, then we can, we can release them. So, we're doing our best to get that done. Obviously, some people just don't learn and they keep reoffending. And at some point, you got, you got to be accountable for what you did. And the DOC, I'm telling you, we struggle with that all the time. I mean, we're out there, I mean, if they don't want to take people, they don't take people.
What? The state of Indiana dumping on the locals?
Well, they were, what we were told at one time, they had no beds. And they probably were tied with some of the bigger jails, Marion County, Lake County. They get so many beds allocated to them. And then counties like us, and when we can get them in, we have beds available, we'll contact them. Sometimes they'll say, hey, we've got two beds available. You can bring two. Sometimes they'll say, hey, you can bring 10, 20, whatever. I think a couple of weeks ago, I think we took 20, two DOCs, so... So, we're doing what we can. And I think that by appropriating these funds to the inmates in other jails, I think that's going to help reduce our number as long as we can find beds. I do want to warn you or let you know that as we keep looking and the further out we have to go, the more staffing is going to require and the more, probably going to need another van or two to do transports. Because at some point, we're going to get to the point where we're out. We are going to have to pick them up to take them to the court appearances and things like that.
Would it just be, just as smart to open up the D home? If you got to get more staff because you say you can't use the D home, but you can't staff it? But now you're telling you, oh, I have more vans, more staff.
But it's easier to hire three people than 24 people. And I think for the, for the transporting from jail to jail, we could do that by the three people instead of 24 at the jail, or at the D home. But yeah, the D home's always an option. Like I've told you before, we'll do our best to hire people. Just, you know, right now, we are one down at the jail. We had someone leave. We've got another agenda ready to leave to go to MPD to work there at the police department. But, you know, we started back in January of last year, we were down 20. So, you know, I'll take being down two or three or six, being down 20, so... With the jail, and just to let you know, today, we were at Hartland Career Center recruiting. We've got a meeting with Grand Regional Career Center. They've got, they've implemented a new program where people in the criminal justice program, once they finish, are certified jailers.
I saw that, my son went there.
So, we're getting ready to, we're getting ready to meet with him and go talk to their students to see if we can get some, some people to apply and he can go that route.
Sheriff, if I could get your opinion, because I appreciate the jail report that you sent to us. And so, just looking through the statistics, just some things kind of stood out for me. And if you could share your opinion. And I know you have an inherited problem, issue as well. But looking at the booking statistics from 2020 to 2023, there is a very, there is a very, very small difference. Until, in 2020, there was 2,769 admissions. In 2023, there was 2,765. So, we actually reduced by four admissions during that time. Of our top, top three charges, drug charges are down. I think it was alcohol. I had, yeah, alcohol-related is, is up a little bit. Probation violations are down just a little bit. And the failure to appear is are down as well. However, our average daily population from 2020 to 2023 is going up 50, 51 inmates. So, with, with the admissions and releases being really right there together, no really move one way or another over that time. But yeah, our average daily population has went up by 51 inmates during that time. Do you know what would be a contributing factor or why we would see that kind of, of an increase with top charges being what, what they are, the decrease in those top charges? And then with the bookings, I'm staying, I'm staying the same.
Well, as far as our, kind of seeing our jail populations, multi-precident as to why we're overcrowded. I think a big reason, and you guys discussed it before, is, is we need to fix our judicial system to where we're getting people in and out quicker. And they're doing the best they can. I'm not here to criticize anybody, but that needs to be addressed. And I've said it before in public and I'll say it again, we can go to 600-person bed for jail. And if we don't fix the totality of what's going on, we're going to continue to have these issues.
I agree.
So, we have to fix that. As far as the, as far as arrests are concerned, I mean, we just live in a, in a society today that some people would consider lawless society. People have no regard for the law. And we as a society have to decide what do we do with those, those that do, or that have no regard for the law? We're going to hold them accountable or we're just going to let them go and let them run amok? You know, people were surprised over the, the incident that occurred at Circle K with the juvenile. I'm not surprised because I've, we've seen that coming. We're, we're reaping what we've sown in this, in our society, in our country for the last 50 to 100 years. What we've been sown, we are now reaping the results of what, what we've been doing. So, the reality of it is, it's, it's, we do one of two things. You can tell police, hey, don't do your job and allow those that, that to break the law to continue doing what they're doing. But we got to remember when we do that, when a person breaks the law, here's what people don't realize. don't realize, when they break the law, they're pretty much, just for lack of a better term, flipping off society, saying, I don't care about the rules. I don't care about what you think, we're gonna do what we want to do. But to have a civilized society, we have to have laws, we have to be able to enforce those laws. If not, we'll end up like some of these bigger cities where crime is running rampant, and as a sheriff, we don't want that to happen. I'm not gonna allow that to happen. We're gonna have our guys do their job, hold people accountable for what they're doing, and then we'll deal with the rest later on. But, I mean, I think there's a lot of reasons why those numbers fluctuate. You know, but we've got to fix the whole thing. We've got to somehow come together, fix the issue, and work together to get that done because no one department or government agency can do it on their own. It has to be a cloud of effort between the council, the commissioners, the sheriff's office, and the citizens of Grant County. I mean, we all work for them. So, but yeah, it's gotten out of hand. I don't know if you guys seen the MRAP that we just got off of the twenty-dollar transfer fee. You know, some people said, well, why do you need that? And then nineteen, between nineteen ninety-four, when I was hired at the Marion Police Department in early two thousands, I would've told you, we don't need something like that in our county. But we live in a different world today than we did in nineteen ninety-four.
I have a question about that. How much, what was the grant you guys got?
It's not a grant, it's a transfer fee.
Not the twenty dollars. The guy said you guys also applied for a grant for that thing.
No, we didn't apply for it. You applied to be part of a lease program, home enforcement. It's a military program where they give equipment to home enforcement that they can normally not afford. It's almost a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar vehicle. We got it on the transfer for twenty dollars, and we have about as much into it as we do a police car. So I think it's a great deal. It's a big bulletproof vest for our deputies. And I know there's those that criticize us and will criticize us, but you know what? My job is to protect my deputies. My job is to protect the citizens of Grant County. And if this piece of equipment does that, I'll get one tomorrow or any of the can. But, you know, it's just a big bulletproof vest. We actually can add options where we could put some offensive type of stuff on it, and we chose not to, because we really wanted to use it as a defensive, a defensive piece of equipment for our deputies, and also for natural disasters. I mean, you're gonna go some places where, you know.
Get somebody out, put them in there.
I mean, if you have a, now forbid we have one, but if you have a school shooting, an active shooter at a school, and we need to extract some of the students out of there, throw that thing right up there, put them in there, and the kids are gonna be safe. You know, it's never gonna happen until it happens. I guarantee you, Columbine never thought it was gonna happen, and Columbine, it happened. So we just want to be prepared. We want to make sure that we provide the best service to the community that we can. We're not militarizing the police, but we're just trying to be prepared for the worst and hope for the best.
Just like some firearms, because they look nasty, people, they're assault rifles or what have you.
And this piece of equipment, I'm telling you, to save one life, it's worth it.
So the request that force this evening is for additional appropriation for Houghton County inmate housing in the amount of four hundred thousand. I believe we have to bring this out of table, right? It was tabled at the last meeting. So is there a motion to untable item?
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Connor, a second for Mr. Perez to untable the request from the sheriff's department regarding the inmate housing. Are there any questions from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Connor.
Yes.
Perez.
Yes.
Scott.
Aye.
Hicks.
Yes.
Poling.
Yes.
Lemming.
Aye.
Middlesworth.
Yes. Motion carries.
And then I would make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Connor, a second for Mr. Poling to approve the additional appropriation with, in the sheriff's department budget, allowing that in Houghton County inmate housing. It has been advertised.
Yes, twice.
Yep, okay.
Glad to feel better, Sheriff.
Are there any other questions from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Connor.
Yes.
Poling.
Yes.
Scott.
Aye.
Hicks.
Yes.
Perez.
Aye.
Lemming.
Aye.
Now, sorry.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen. And I'll keep you updated if we're moving inmates, also to add information of how we're progressing with that.
Thank you, Sheriff. Next item on our whole business, Gas City Township Public Library appointment. Did we receive any, just the one?
I didn't see any.
I didn't see any.
Okay, what was the name? Do you remember?
I do not.
Reappoint Tim Lucky.
That was it. You're right.
Tim Lucky, Joe. Just took me a minute.
I would like to approve the appointing request.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Lemming to reappoint Gas City Township Public Library board, Tim Lucky. Are there any questions from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Connor.
Yes.
Lemming.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Hicks.
Yes.
Perez.
Aye.
Poling.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on our whole business, Item C, Grant County Council, ECI Regional Planning District, additional appropriation. We didn't get it advertised, so I'll put it on for the next meeting. It was an oversight. Next, are there any committee reports?
Yes, I had something by way of committee report, I guess you could say. You recall at the last meeting, I brought up concerns I had about the reasons for driving a lot, being disciplined by area plan. I wanted to report to this body that I had a very good conversation with Randy Atkins after the meeting, shared some things with me, and there are certainly two sides to every story. But I did just, I wanted to let the council know, I wasn't just asking for these reasons because I'm a nutball. This is the law, and I wanted to give you the statute and let you hear it, because it's very short. This is Indiana Code five dash fourteen dash three dash four, BHA through C. And it says that as personnel files of public employees, the following things are public information, and they must be disclosed upon request. The name, compensation, job title, business address, business telephone number, job description, education and training background, previous work experience or dates of first and last employment of present or former officers or employees of the agency. Information relating to the status of any formal charges against the employee and the factual basis for a disciplinary action in which final action has been taken and that has resulted in the employee being suspended, demoted, or discharged. However, all personnel file information may be available to the employee. Okay? This has been the law since I started practicing, since I was a deputy attorney general with the state of Indiana, and dealing with this law with public state agencies. I was not asking for this information to be a crank. I was asking because it's the law. And government is here to be the servant of the people and not its master. And so when we ask for this information, we should be given it. Now, maybe Mr. Atkins wasn't the person to ask, and maybe Mr. Hicks wasn't, because they, you know, arguably are not the appointing authority or the representative of the APC. I just wanted you to know that. Anybody, any member of the public can ask for that information, including the factual basis for suspension. So I was not trying to make anybody's life hard. I really wanted to know. I wanted to hear the story and hear the facts. So FYI, if you ever, any of you ever want to know about that kind of information for any public employee, ask, because it's the law. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other committee reports?
Mr. President, we have the annually appointed, if you will, jail review committee. I can tell you, we have not met in a few weeks. We actually have not met since, a lot of us are aware of this, the new House bill that was passed. And then I guess it draws some concerns. I, you know, it just appears that the council was left out of a few things. I was hoping to be able to get some answers from the commissioner's office, but they had none of them. So I don't know, wouldn't be the appropriate time to ask those questions. I feel like this body deserves some answers in regards to the new House Act and the council being left out of some decisions that is made, and maybe some funding requests that has already been submitted. So there is not a meeting on the agenda, there has not been an additional meeting that has been asked for at this particular time. So I just wanted to let you know that there's still an active committee, however, we have not met in a few weeks.
Was you made aware of that agreement with the bar?
No.
The five million?
No. It was not.
Do you feel like that, being that you met once, do you feel like that you could value the envoy's integrity through the process?
Not at this point. Everything that is coming out, we are learning at this point, just continues to be a surprise on our part. It's hard to decipher exactly what's going on, who is involved, to be honest, because there continues to be names that's mentioned, companies that's mentioned. There seem to be several companies involved, and maybe even the appearance that a lot of these companies were involved in some capacity before the jail review committee even began meeting. So, you know, there is certainly some concerns there that, like I said, I feel that this body deserves answers.
So how would you like to proceed forward?
That's a great question. You know, again, I believe it's going to start with the commissioner's office. I don't know if it's a matter of the three of us getting with the commissioners, if we hold a joint meeting somehow.
I'm proud of the joint session.
The joint session?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea, to have another joint session and then just be able to answer the questions and the concerns that I think a majority of us have on this body regarding the process and things that occurred that we wasn't in the loop, and even this committee appointment to the BOT.
Right. Yeah, this bear, this bond, it was a surprise to me. I did not recall anything ever being mentioned about bear or a five-million-dollar bond, anything going towards any capital projects or bonds or anything associated with the So I just wanted to let you know where we stood with the jail review committee.
Are there any other committee reports?
Are you selecting the other committee that we established or?
I believe, I think maybe we already had an ARP committee. I'll have to go back and look, but probably president and vice president and one other member. It may have been over a year ago. I believe it was.
Like I said, I thought we had.
I think it's the president, vice president, and someone else, another member.
So since we can't remember, we clearly haven't been updated very long.
That we was cut out a year ago from the process. So would there be a volunteer then? Connor? Okay. Mr. Lemming and myself and Mr. Connor will serve on the ARPA review committee. Is there a certain time of the day of your birth?
Not really. It's during the day, it's best for me.
Okay.
I will say, I agree completely that we need to be kept in the process, I mean, for transparency. I mean, I've said many times, our function is to open and close the birth stream, but you can't do that if you're blind. You gotta know what's going on. There may be, you know, the commissioners are the executive body. They can make decisions and they can split any that they already have. But that's the technicality of the law. I think the spirit of the law is cooperation between the agencies and talking about these things and helping keep each other informed for the good of the people. I think that's what the people want us to do. So I think we're heading in the right direction.
Any other comments from the members? Do we want to allow public comment? I'll allow public comment. Come to the podium and we'll give you two minutes per person.
I won't take that long.
Mr. Duke's always brief.
I try, babe.
You do a good job.
Some commissioners don't think I am, but just for your awareness, I think you all, several of you I talked to about the UHP eleven twenty, number one, just as Mr. Scott was saying that he has got concerns. I, as one public citizen, have got concerns as well. And just for your information, I submitted a four-year request to the commissioners back at, what was it, the beginning of April, the second, first or the second, I had their meeting, and I presented that to them at that time. I'm waiting for response on that. But the four-year request was specifically for communications between the commissioners and Mr. Stackhoff and the five representatives or senators that were on the bill, the two bills, as well as the senate advisor that was appointed. I, like I said, I haven't yet to receive any response. Mr. Persinger did communicate with me and indicated they were postponed by May seventeenth. I think it's time to ask, I'm gonna ask for an update on where their progress is at, because I kind of have a concern that the request may be being slow-walked. I have not finally, about six weeks, time frame between my request, what he said, Mr. Persinger said to be fulfilled. I don't think there's a whole lot there, but I don't think it takes six weeks to respond from other four-year requests. But I just wanted to provide that information to you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Duke.
Any other public comment?
It's been quite a while. I guess I'm supposed to introduce myself. It's been quite a while since I spoke to you about the funding or review of the solar ordinance, and you turned it down. And it was then funded by a couple individuals. And I will tell you that the commissioner's solar ordinance is illegal. It has a flaw in it, where they have taken approval of the development plan upon themselves and not the APC. The APC, it is their job to do it. They are the sole authority to approve a development plan under state law. So that'll have to be changed. I thought you would want to know. Thank you.
Ed, did you get a written opinion that we could see?
I did get a written opinion. If you had paid for it, I'd gladly give it to you. But I might give it to you anyway.
If it was mine, I'd like to see it.
It's not public. I did not write it. And I did not pay for it. So I really should ask the guys who did pay for it to give it out. You can give it, don't you? Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You're welcome.
Any other public input? Our next regular meeting is Wednesday, May the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. You have everything? Okay. Beginning adjourned.